Go for it.
Alrighty, we're gonna get started. So, we're gonna start off with our trip of the month. Are you guys ready? So, did you guys hear the rumor about the cafeteria bonus?
No. Ella Ross though.
Well, I'm not gonna spread it, but you guys can't be worried. No, gather together, rumor and we spread whatever and kinda funny. Alright, we have a lot going on today. First up, we have Mr. Tiago.
That right?
That is correct. Alrighty, and he's with the February Student of the Month.
Good morning. This month's Student of the Month is her work and takes pride in doing a good job. She's very involved in the school community and is always a pleasure to have in class. Mr. Van Castle has said that she's always willing to work with anyone and is a model student in his class. Ms. Hulet says that she's a shining example of our school values here at UHS. She, Ms. Hulet, has had this student in class for three years and can confidently say that this student is the epitome of a hard worker, polite. Although this student has a slight advantage to appearance in Spanish class, she's never been boastful of her ability. When she knows something that we haven't learned yet in class, she remains patient and encouraged. As a teacher, she's even patient with Ms. Hulet when she might have a language or culture question that this student may have. In my own experience, the student's very hardworking and is very dedicated to class and WHS as a whole. Although I've only known her, I've seen her grow a lot as a musician in my class. I'm proud to announce that our February Student of the Month-
Felicitaciones, Marta. Alrighty. Alright, next up, we have Mr. Campbell with this year's senior class of 10.
Good morning. At the end of semester one, we're with guidance to manually become members of the senior class. That has been done and our numbers have been double checked to ensure our data is accurate. At this time, we are happy to present the top 10 seniors in the class of 2021. Before I introduce these individuals, I want to speak to the entire class about how proud of you the teachers and administration are. You had a reputation when I came in here of being academically focused. You know, the difference in GPA between consecutive placement was measured to the thousandth place. So, great job, but at the same time, we're gonna remind you all those that end is in sight. We still have a ways to go, so please keep up the good work. With the following students, please come down front to be recognized as his name is read in alphabetical order as a member of the top 10 for the class of 2021. Kerrigan Anadzuski. Anna Dooley. Rowan Goblebeane. Noah Groo. Dana Lesko. Ella Mishu. Nathan Miller. Lauren. Abigail Rawl. Jacob Smith. What can be said about these students can be said about many in this class. They made decisions about the courses they have taken and achieved academic success in order to prepare themselves for college and the academic programs they wish to continue their study. It's consistent effort and dedication to their studies, which permitted them to teach us what they had learned and was able to apply. Their studies have included honor level courses, AP level courses, and college courses. They have been handed and congratulated. I would also like to congratulate their parents and significant adults involved with them in the background on a job well done. Please join me in congratulating the top 10 for the class of 2021. Lovely, nice team. I would also like to recognize the salutatorium for this senior class, Mr. Jacob Smith. Congratulations. And the valedictorian for the- Anadzuski. At this time, I would like to ask you to turn to this seat. Thank you and congratulations again. Hi, Kerrigan. Kerrigan, each year as principal of the high school, I get to nominate a student for the main principal's award. Standing here as a member of the top 10 speaks to your academic preparedness. As a member of the Winter High School Chapter of National Society, it also speaks to your character, service, and citizenship. Those of us that were here when you received the October Student of the Month, there's many examples of how you excel in each of these four pillars. You won my vote last year. When you demonstrated the integrity we wish to see in all students here at Winter. When you came to me to ask how to resolve a situation where a peer was not being treated in a manner you felt this student and all students should be here at Winter. You did this without reservation, even though it could have had an impact on other relationships you have in this building. The way you did it likely made sure that that didn't happen, but thank you for being that person. Please join me in congratulating Kerrigan, Lauren, and Mrs. Anadzuski on Kerrigan being named the 2021 Winter High School Main Principal's Award winner. Kerrigan will be eligible for sponsorship by the MPA. Congratulations, Kerrigan.
Congratulations. Next up, we have Mrs. Kaiser and Max with the QR
Max, Ms. Kaiser?
I see Max.
I'm trying to get rid of that chime too. There's Max.
So, okay, so let's see if I can share my screen. Okay, nevermind. But, um, alright, so we came up with a new sign-in, sign-out system for classrooms with a QR code. And what students will do is they'll scan that QR code and then they'll go through this Google form that will take down their name, the time they left, all that interesting statistics for logistical reasons. So, this will be implemented, I believe, on Monday. Well, it will be by the end of March, so I'm gonna try and get that link to the Google form pulled up right now in just a minute. Okay, so this, I think, is the form. And this is what you'll be entering. So you'll go to the form and you'll select whether you're entering or leaving the classroom. And then you'll select where you're going. So say the bathroom, the office, the nurse, et cetera. And after that, you'll select which subject you're coming from. And this will filter down the classrooms that you're, well, coming from. And under, like, say I were to select English classes on what subject I'm coming from. I would then select which teacher, which teacher's classroom I'm coming from. And then I would submit and that would be, that would be all. So, yeah, it's pretty simple. You're just gonna scan the QR code, you're gonna enter whether you're entering or leaving, where you're going, and where you're coming from, and that's, that's what you're going to do. So, I think that that's just about it. I don't know if Ms. Kaiser's here. But, yeah, I mean, are there any questions from anybody?
I have a quick question. Max, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
On where the destination is, is there an opportunity to put other if it's anything other than the bathroom, the nurse, or the office?
Yeah, yeah, so those can be added pretty quickly. But those are just the first three that I, that I put on there. More will be added in the next week. This is actually the start of the second version of the QR code, which I'm working on right now. So, yeah, it's more, more destinations will be added.
Thank you for your hard work, it looks great.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, thank you.
So, Max, can you explain to the juniors and seniors out there how this will be used for privileges as well?
Yeah, so like I said, you'll go to the QR code, you'll select whether you're entering or leaving, and then on the subject that you can have, there's also junior and senior privileges. So that, you'd select that as your subject and then that's, that's all you'll submit. It's, it's just a dropdown list, so you'll just click the item that corresponds to your, whatever you're doing.
Thank you.
And if I don't have a phone, can I use my laptop?
Yes, yes, so the QR code, all the QR code is a link to the form, is, is a link to the form. So your phone can scan it, iPhone or Android, and information to do that will be posted on the website. But this will be posted on teachers' websites as just a regular link, so you'll click on the link and it'll bring you to the same form.
No questions? Anybody else in the audience that's questioning outside of the class?
Anyone via Zoom have any questions for Max?
Hey, I'm gonna say thank you, Max. I know you've put a lot of time and energy into this, and I know that you're gonna work on it again this weekend. Our hope, as Max says, is to get this fully in place towards the end of hopefully next week. We wanna give all the teachers a chance to review it one more time and then hopefully maybe next Thursday, we can fully implement it.
Yeah, and I'll release, I'll release a video also explaining how to do it. It's just a screen recording of my phone doing it too, so that'll be there.
Thanks. Ms. Kaiser, do you have any, I see now up there. Do you have anything you wanna add? Because Ms. Kaiser also worked with Max to help get this going.
You're muted.
Apologies for that. No, other than that, I am a big cheerleader for this and I think it'll just, it's just gonna streamline things for everybody and make the, like I'd give the analogy before on Wednesday, but it's not gonna change anything, it's just gonna make things easier for us. And, yeah, as far as teaching goes, no interruptions or minimal interruptions compared to before. So if you have any other requests, please get them into us, because we wanna get those done as soon as possible for edits on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's really cool, thanks, guys. Alrighty, next up, we have Mrs. D, if you can come join me. We're gonna start one of our March Madness activities, our dramatic reading. Yay, so- Dramatic reading. Mrs. D. Well, Jacob Vera, please come down. I heard you were the, oh, I see you, Jacob Vera. Come down here. First March Madness activity.
My favorite part about this is all the drama people just staring straight ahead because they were so fearful that I was gonna call them out to join me. But I wouldn't do that to you, not in this setting. Except Rowan right now, who is, is like cursing me in his brain, I can see it. He's rolling his eye. Oh, no, we got a little flick, okay, he's up there now. Alright, so we're kicking off the March Madness, even though we're starting March Madness like late and whatever, but we're kicking off the March Madness, let's hear it for March Madness! Really? You guys are pitiful. Pitiful, stand up. Stand up!
Yeah, stand up.
Stand up, I'm not kidding, stand up!
Yeah.
Stand up! Yeah, I hope everybody in Zoom is standing up. Alright, take your right index finger. I'll leave a mirror for you so it's not too thumpy and you don't sing too hard. Take your right index finger, make a figure eight in the air. Take your left index finger, make a figure eight in the air. What is this, the figure eight? You're gonna put your finger- Because I told you to and I'm a teacher. There's no other necessary explanation. Take your left ear and make a figure eight in the air. Just do it. It's not gonna hurt you. Take your knees and make figure eights in the air. Don't you dare sit down, goddess. It's not gonna hurt you. Bunch of wimps.
I thought I got rid of that sound.
Alright, one more time, so that I don't make you stand up again. Let's hear it for March Madness! Oh my gosh, Steve, does that hurt? No, it didn't, it was actually enjoyable. Okay, we have three contestants doing the dramatic reading this year to kick off the March Madness. Take a little whisper, I'd say, to volunteer to get up here, do this in front of all of you. You all just couldn't even draw a figure eight in the air when no one was really looking at you. So these people are stepping it up, okay? We've got the incomparable Joshua right here, about an hour and a half away. Alright, we have Jake. Where's Jake, right here? And Anna, where is Anna Perkins? Anna, come on down. Alright. This year, we're shaking it up. We've got some incredibly dramatic moments. You might wanna get out your Kleenex and tissues, be prepared. Figured on Friday morning, we all needed to shed a good tear or cleanse our souls. I'm totally kidding, you've been knocking out what's gonna happen. Okay, why don't we let Joshua go first? Why don't the two of you go up there so we can keep our distance? So we can keep our distance? Alright. Joshua, just so you know, I have this handy dandy matrix somebody made for me. Pretty funny, I've got emojis and everything in case I didn't know what these things meant. So you're being graded on your voice, which, you've got a microphone, so I don't know, I'll tell you there, I guess use the microphone, Josh. Alright, your eye contact, which nobody in this room seems comfortable with. Your fluency, which means, did you stumble or were you just so eloquent that we immediately were captivated by you? And your action, again, you're kind of limited because you have to use this microphone, but you could be like me. You can go on a stage, but then the people at home can't hear you. Is that correct?
They can hear, they just won't see him as much.
What do you think?
Yeah, go up there, I can-
Alright, go on the stage, make an effective decision, go for it.
Go in front of the screen.
Use the entire space, Joshua.
Yes, I'll have, I'll have screech falling.
I can do it here too.
No, no, go right up there. Get up there!
You must be a shock, go for it, go for it.
I'm not too scared. Okay, taking the mic. Alright, I'll start with scene.
Alright, hold on.
Whenever you're ready, Michelle.
Oh, I'm ready now.
I'm not too excited, just give me a sec. Chase can help dance with me. She's my dance partner, okay. Alright, you ready, Michelle?
Yep.
Alrighty, and scene. Valentine's Day is one of the most stupid holidays that has ever existed, if you ask me. It's all these big money corporate companies profiting off naive romantics by selling aphrodisiacs like chocolate. You guys know what chocolate is? Chocolate is made from cacao. You know what cacao is? It may look good, but it's actually just this grainy, stupid, bitter, little bean, and it's just, it's disgusting. Why should an innocent teenager be bombarded with all this pink, red, artificial sweetness on his way to the store to get some burritos? All I really wanted to do today is grab these chips and head to my room and just get away from my parents yelling while watching Chainsaw Massacre 2. Because, believe it or not, that movie's slightly less terrifying than my parents screaming. And the worst part is everything, 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 everywhere you look in the store has that stupid L word on it. Love. Why should I have to see that word over and over again? Every time I look at it, it feels like a punch straight to my gut. And being in a grocery store the day before Valentine's Day, that L word isn't exactly scarce. Why do I have to suffer through this? Why do I have to be ambushed by this word at a drugstore when it's a word that my parents don't even say to each other anymore? Who would even buy such a stupid bear, such a stupid thing? I love you very much. Disgusting. Hello? Oh, Amanda? Oh, yeah, Amanda from science class? Yeah, yeah. No, I don't have science tomorrow. Yeah, I know this is Valentine's Day. But with me? Okay, I'll meet you at the movie theater at seven. Is anybody else home? Just us? Yeah, no, 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 that's fine, that's fine. See you then. Valentine's Day is still stupid, okay? Scene.
Thanks, see you.
Oh, yeah. I didn't wanna come up here, trust me.
I'm good.
Valentine's Day is the most stupid holiday that has ever existed, if you ask me. It's just all these big money corporate companies profiting off the naive romantics by selling aphrodisiacs like chocolates. You know what chocolate's made of? Gail. Now, gail looks delicious from the outside, but boy, isn't this disgusting? It's grainy, bitter, just like the L word itself. Riddle me this. Why shouldn't an innocent teenager be bombarded with all this pink, red, artificial sugary sweetness when just going to the store to pick up some burritos? All I really wanted to do is to grab these chips, head to my room, and drown out all the yelling from my parents' room with screams from Chainsaw Massacre 2. Because, believe it or not, that movie is slightly less terrifying than what's going on outside my bedroom door. And the worst part? Everything, everywhere you look has the L word on it, you know? The L word. Love. Why should I have to see that word over and over again? Every time I look at it, it feels like a punch straight to my gut. And being in a grocery store the day before Valentine's, that L word isn't exactly scarce. Why do I have to suffer through this? Why do I have to be ambushed by this word at a drugstore when it's a word that my parents don't even say to each other anymore? Who would even buy such a stupid thing? I love you very much. Disgusting. Hello? Oh, yeah? Hey, Amanda. Amanda from science? Right? Uh, oh, no, I have science tomorrow. Why? Yeah, I know tomorrow's Valentine's Day. Okay. I'll meet you at the movie theater at seven. Who else is good? Oh. That sounds great. I mean, Valentine's Day is just- I should so much.
That was awesome! Yeah.
Yeah.
Jake, next year, you're in. Whether you want to or not, that's what you can do. Does she wanna stay? What if she wins?
Victor Love?
I'm requiring-
I require. You're great.
Try to say your name.
Emma? Valentine's Day is the most stupid holiday that has ever existed, if you ask me. It's just all of these big money corporate companies profiting off naive romantics by selling aphrodisiacs like chocolate. You know what chocolate's made of? Gail looks delicious from the outside, but boy, isn't it disgusting? It's grainy, bitter, just like the L word itself. Riddle me this. Why should an innocent teenager be bombarded with all of this, this pink, red, artificial sugary sweetness when just going to the store to pick up some burritos? All I really want today is to grab these chips, head to my room, and drown out the yelling from my parents' room with the screams from Chainsaw Massacre 2, because, believe it or not, that movie is slightly less terrifying than what's going on outside my bedroom door. And the worst part? Everything, 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 everywhere you look has the L word on it. You know, the L word? Love. Why should I have to see that word over and over again? Every time I look at it, it feels like a punch straight to my gut. And being in a grocery store the day before Valentine's, that L word isn't exactly scarce. Why do I have to suffer through this? Why do I have to be ambushed by this word at a drugstore when it's a word that my parents don't even say to each other anymore? Who would even buy such a stupid thing? I love you very much. Disgusting. Hello? Oh, yeah, hey, Charlie. Charlie from science? What? Oh, no, I don't have any plans tomorrow. Why? Yeah, I know tomorrow's Valentine's Day. Okay, sure, I'll meet you at the movie theater at seven. Who else is good? Oh, it's just gonna be us? That sounds great to see them. I mean, Valentine's Day is still stupid.
What? I think she's referring, calling a friend back there.
Alright, sparing no expense here from the High School with two highly qualified judges. That would be me and Mr. Discolius.
That would be me and Mr. De Sculley. Now, you might feel like we're not qualified, but we are both award-winning performers. I realize you don't know that because these awards were given to us in the middle of the Pacific Ocean. However, we do have them, we can bring them in in case you want to recount. I don't know how the point system works. So does anyone know how many points, like, the winning team gets for their, for their grade hall, for their class? Anyone? Can I make something up? Can I make something up? Like, five hundred and eighty-five points or something? Wouldn't that be amazing if it had that power?
I think it's like, I think it works just like first, first is four, second is three, yeah.
Great. So, because there were no freshman competitors, unfortunately, the freshmen get zero points. Sorry about that freshman class. I am sorry, freshmen, maybe next year, I understand it's a little challenging this year, so maybe next year they will, they will have sophomores, they will come forward and, um, raise the cream. So that means the senior and sophomore classes tie, and they each get three points. Anna is already with junior class, four points. Oh, I realize you're in the room of seniors, so you're not so enthusiastic for clapping, but I will clap for you, Anna. Nice job. I have no idea who's going next because I do not have an agenda. For some reason, nobody ever seems to want to give me one. Apparently, they're nervous that I might take them to work. Oh, it's Mr. Campbell. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Mr. Campbell.
Well, there's no way I can follow those students. But I do want to talk to you about last Friday. You know, I've demonstrated that I believe in, in shared leadership. I, I listen to the students through my student leadership team. I listen to my teachers through staff meetings and, and teacher leadership meetings. But a situation like last Friday, you know, that was Mr. Stone and I, and, and those people that we felt were important to be involved with us. So I want to talk about it because you guys, when I said, "Do something," it's just like when he says, "Jump up," you know, you guys jumped up, okay? We appreciate that. Situations like last Friday, when I asked you to just move to the pack or move to the gym without telling me why, and you did it? That means a lot. That shows you trust me and that you respect what I asked you to do. But I also think it's important that because you are, are young adults, that I communicate with you. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the thought process Mr. Stone and I went through when this situation occurred. So that if something else happens, we'll get that same response. In the library, I believe with senior officers, we're talking about prom, this is, Mrs. Mitchell came in and said, "I need to speak with you." She's the boss, so I get up and went up and followed her and talked to her. Where she informed me that Mr. Stone was up in the chemistry room and had a concern about the smell of gas. When I got up there, get between the physics room and the chem lab, there was a smell of gas and likely it was propane, but not totally sure. When I walked into the room, I was informed that Mr. Moore had already been called, and Mr. Moore immediately, and he's the hero, if anybody's gonna be a hero, he immediately went outside and made sure that the, uh, tank was shut off so that no more gas was coming into fill. So then we talked about who else needs to be informed. Mrs. Stone called Winter P D and the Winter Fire Department, and Mr. Tucker called the middle school to let them know, although we're gonna move students and staff to the pack and the gym, to the office at the end of the building, if the situation warranted, we would be coming up there. As I started down to come back downstairs, most of you were in the, or half of you were in the cafeteria for lunch, and half were in homerooms downstairs, the bell had rung. So I met some of you right as you get to the top of the stairs. So turn your right back around, you did it, I said, came down here. Again, thank you very much. And as soon as I got everybody headed back down the stairs, I went to all classrooms and asked each of you in the classrooms to head to the gymnasium. Keep in mind, we still had to keep within fifty, right? When I was done that, went back up to join Mr. Stone, Mr. Tucker, and Mr. Moore, and it was evident as I approached the area, the smell of gas had just diminished, you know, quite a bit. The air handlers were doing the job. They're pulling out the old air and bringing in new air. And with no more gas coming into the building, the air was clearly clean enough. By the time the fire department got there, I will tell you that you had to take your mask off in order to smell anything. With his confirmation, I deemed it appropriate to leave you where you are, didn't feel that there was any greater danger. At that point, because I felt it was safe to do so, I came down here and spoke to all the students and the staff in the pack to explain what was going on and what we still had to do to ensure that students could safely return to classes. I also gave the same message in the gymnasium. Went back up, and the gas, wanted to check for gas in an open area, it was detecting zero gas. So again, the air handlers were doing exactly what we needed them to do. After a few minutes, the chief, the fire chief, who's in charge by that time, because once they're on the scene, unless the superintendent's here, which he is today, I take my orders from there. So he gave us the go-ahead to move everybody back into the classroom. Okay, teaching, everything was safe, all the, all the lines were pressurized, tested, no gases detected. As I said, I share this because I want, if there's ever another situation, to get the same reaction that I got this time. But I also would ask that you realize, always, always, our first priority from the beginning to the end of any situation is the safety of everybody in the building. Now, Ms. Murchell and Mr. Soussat will tell you, I needed them, I needed them in the beginning to understand where the little gas was. Because I'm new to the building, I really hadn't even given a thought. I now know where the pipeline goes, okay? So I needed them. But as soon as I had that information, as much as they wanted to say to help, I directed them on it. Everybody, safety first. And as I did, I want you to realize, as soon as it's safe for me to do so, because I believe you're young adults can handle it, I came down and shared as much information about the situation that I knew with you to ensure that we stay calm. Also, I want you to realize that when the situation's over, a message will be blasted out to parents. Okay, we'll use both telephone and email to do that. Because that situation occurred during lunch, I also ask you to understand that we will feed you, okay? We will feed you when it's safe to do so. That morning, okay, some of you may not have been here, but we had visited, right? Middle school had come down because of the situation there. Without even being asked, Diane in the cafeteria in chef week gathered food, drinks, and started going around to all the areas where the middle school kids were to make sure that they had their breakfast. Okay? We'll do the same for you. I also need to pay this. Because Ms. Soussat at the superintendent's office and Mrs. Mitchell here get inundated with telephone. Okay? Now, I've been in this business long enough. I don't, I don't have my phone, I guess it's wrong like that. You know, it's so quick to send out a text message, right? Understand that some of those messages, by the time they got back to us, it's been twisted a little bit, and that happened, you know that. Okay? So, the favor. Recognize that you may not get fed your lunch on the normal schedule. But we will feed you. Secondly, you may not be allowed to go to the bathroom when you were asked. But we had people where we knew they were. See? And if somebody, allow somebody to go to the bathroom. And I, I tell you, I've seen many students come out of Ms. Murchell's room, and the closest bathroom with our current system would be right out front of the office, correct? But I find them coming out of the bathroom down by the gym. But we knew where you were, safest place for us to keep an eye on you in case we had to move you out was where we put you. If they'd gone any longer, we probably would have figured out a way to get you to the bathroom. As young adults, we just ask that there are times we need you to be patient. Third, and most importantly, be mindful of the tone and words chosen if you choose to protect their parents during these situations. Seriously, I'm, I'll be back when I was a junior high principal in Madison, I gave up on trying to tell students not to use their phones. It just, you know, I understand, I get it. Okay? As I said, a lot of the information gets twisted, and I do understand parents want to know. I respect that. I respect you wanting to tell it. To tell you why, to be a good example of why it's important to be careful about how we say, what we say. Hunting season 2019, I get a text from my wife just before lunch. Trista sent me a text that there's a guy up front of the school with a gun. We're in lockdown. I texted her back, my wife said. She hasn't responded. What should I do? Should I go? No. Since then, she got caught, and because she's a freshman, she actually listened and put her phone away. And that was exactly it. Okay? But my wife can't. So, you know, in this, in this situation, if you, if you've got a text, then the message could have been, Mr. Campbell had moved us to the gym or to the PAC, wherever I put you. I will text you more when you come back and tell us what's going on. Because I will. Okay? I will. Again, I thank you for that trust and respect last Friday that is so critical in situations like that. Okay? Again, thank you for listening. And I believe that ends our program. Oh.
One more?
Oh, we have one more. And I thought I had.
Well, we have a little surprise. We have a quick video from some of the video production students. They are pretty funny, so like here, I haven't had the chance to watch this one, but they're pretty cool guys. I've seen them at work when I walk in past the video production room, and they're just very creative. Know what they do with the veggie standoff, the notorious thing.
I just want to say something.
Okay, and Michelle, I'm gonna say something before. I use my hat.
So the veggie standoff was actually made last semester by my three, at the time they were video students and I were the fourth student. And wait till you see what they're working on now, but that's still in process. They're working on a web series that you're going to love. But this was a project, it's called the Shaw Challenge, and it's based on the forty-eight hour film challenge, but I could be more than forty-eight hours because that's arduous to do. I've done the forty-eight hour film challenge a lot. So, we decided to do this project. The day we start it, they draw a genre out of a hat. They all got one, they can have a second role. I can't remember, did you guys draw it twice tonight? Or, no, you took the first draw. And you got buddy film, correct? No? Oh, that's right, action adventure, I'm sorry, buddy film is different. Action adventure, and then I give them a line of dialogue they have to use, a prop they have to use, and a character they have to use at some point in it. And then they make the short film in two weeks and start to finish. A lot of fun, a lot of work, and I think they did a great job. The line of dialogue was, "I have been, I was lied to and very much deceived." The, the prop actually became a main character, and it's kind of down here, it's an dinosaur that lives in the studio. Um, the character, do you remember the name? Should have heard the sound. Hugh Simon, who was a vegetable standover. So, here we go. All right.
I was lied to and very much deceived. How could my own coworkers steal from me? I gotta find a way to stop him. It's time. I should have left him first. How could you do this to me? I trusted you.
Because I wanted all the money for myself. I like money.
My last question is, how did I control me? I'm on a scooter in your car.
Because I'm a dinosaur. I don't know how to drive.
Huh, I did not think of that. Whatever. I never want to see you, your face, or your friends ever again. Beat it.
There you are. Someone gonna end us?
So Ms. Shaw, would you share with seniors? We're gonna sign off for everybody else, but this time with seniors, we're gonna do the survey, so Ms. Shaw is gonna share the link with you.
Okay, so I'm gonna end the Zoom meeting. End the Zoom meeting?